Connecting, it's now recording.
Okay, good evening and welcome to Vanessa and Jan particularly, nice to see you. I'm sorry we're a bit late, we're having a bit of trouble with the machine as you can tell. Right, if we're ready to start, let me go through the, very briefly, this is a long time since we got together, I'll have to go through the prologue. We can take our declarations of interest. Have any? No items requiring urgent attention? No. Freedom of Information Act 2000, Case Protection Act 2018, why? Please swallow or whatever you want to do, but get rid of your mobile cell phones or switch them off. This is being recorded as you've heard. And we come to the public participation that I know you've heard this before, but it's a long time since we reached this from that, so I want to repeat it again. The standing orders for the meeting require that decisions about the town council makes, particularly according to affecting money, have to be made by the councillors, which means that the members of the public can't participate in those. So it means that we will start in line with the standing orders I've just referred to. When we get back to item, when we finish with item seven of the agenda, I'll suspend standing orders, which means there is a free house if you like. Everybody takes part and joins in the discussion. And we're then, as usual, looking for ideas and comments and so on. And then we'll return to standing orders at the close of the meeting. So having said all that, we'll start the formal parts of the meeting. Apologies for everything, Angie.
I have apologies from councillor Lyn Goodman Bradbury and also from Colin Timms.
Thank you very much. Agreements for the agenda between parts one and two, we have no part two.
Sorry, chairman, do you accept the apologies?
I'm sorry, yes, yes, do we accept those apologies, members? Thank you. Agreements for the agenda between parts one and two, do we all agree that we don't have a part two? Declarations of interest, do we have any?
No.
Dispensations, have we had any requests?
No, we haven't.
The minutes, to approve aside the minutes of the events committee meeting held on the 28th of January. I'm sure you all remember those word by word. If you've had time to have a look at them and reread them, have you any comments about them, any questions? Councillor Morehead.
Thank you Chair. I'd just like to say how sad all these wonderful plans, events and Covid-19 just did for them all.
Thank you.
What a wonderful year we would have had, but thanks to our projects officer, we still have some things to celebrate.
Yeah, yeah. Yes, have we all been generally agreed with the meeting before I move on? Okay, thank you. I'd just like to echo what Councillor Morehead just said, in fact. We did manage with the VE Day and VJ Day and the things like the Armed Forces Day and so on, so that we got those done. And of course, we had we had a show on the lawn a couple of weeks, weekends ago, which went down, that wasn't planned, but it went down very well. And we have, we will talk about the film weekend a little later, no doubt. But we'll agree with the minutes, can I take those as read? Thank you, you're approved, thank you, I'll sign them later. Right, looking at the event expenditure, now you can take us through that, Angie.
Yeah, if you're happy, Chairman, I'll share my screen, so we can talk it through, okay, thank you. Okay, so can everybody see that?
It's small.
Okay, apologies to Small. If not, hopefully you've got the PDF, but just to take you through. From, basically, we had for two, we had some expenses from the day from just preparing for posters and also from posters we, I'd ordered for the May events, which was shown there to Mother Brown. With the agreement of yourself, Chairman, and the mayor, we also had so we decided to pay for fish and chips for the day for older people locally that had been shielding. There's a payment on there towards Wimbledon 2021 to waggle events, because it's always paid in advance. Some equipment costs, there's a cost to an individual. Dear gentleman who was very heavily involved with the day, who bought all the props that we would have had on the lawn. And I'm sure if we ever meant to have a celebratory event again, they'll come useful, but we paid for those. You'll also see £130 for the gas check on the gas urn that we have. And then we basically go into two other costs, which are actually sort of major. You've got the two days on the lawn from Prom Prom, which is what you referred to, Chairman. This is actually reduced cost, he normally charges a lot more, but also took donations on the two days to make it financially viable for him. And we also have then the cinema costs, of which I can, there's a total, you will see that most of the cinema, all the cinema costs are in there. The biggest one is to waggle, which is the FM licence, the screen, the toilets, the film licences and then the other costs that we had. And then in the next column, I put provisional estimate, now these are all estimated figures based on what would have happened if Christmas, which is on the agenda, had been normal this year. And then the second page shows you where we are from the planned budget, what's been paid out. And then the income which has come in from the drive-in cinema and donations. We had two lots of donations, a cheque from Churches Together in Dornish and District of 250. We had donations of £379 and the residue was through ticket sales after deduction of VAT and costs of actually selling the tickets. What isn't on here, Mr Chairman, is I'd like to just say a couple of things. One is there are two costs which were paid out in February for events that would have taken place in this year. One was a deposit on the Easter Bunny and the second was a deposit on Catherine's Castles, which would have been inflatable. They have agreed to carry those through to next year. And there's also £70 which isn't showing on here, which is refunds that we made for the May cancellation of the market, where people didn't want to carry forward when we were expecting at that time to be able to carry them forward. And there's about £90 in equipment also to be shown, which is actually equipment that's been bought, which will do for events going forward, which is things like hand sanitiser, visor masks and pegs to put in the ground to allow you to social distance.
Okay. Thank you. Do any members have any questions to ask Angie on there? No questions, any comments? Councillor Morehead. Can't hear you.
I would just like to congratulate our projects officer in particular for all the work that she put into this, whether it happened or not, it's still involved a tremendous amount of work and thought. And I think she's done a wonderful job in spite of everything.
Thank you, thank you. Any other comments? Yes, none there.
Thank you, I'd just like to say big thank you to Angie for organising the drive-in cinema weekend. In my opinion, it was a huge success, I went to all the showings apart from the first film of Moana. The weather was beautiful. The people that I spoke to at each viewing and at the drive-in church service all enjoyed it. I know the numbers attending weren't great, but I think, I think it was an excellent weekend. Thank you for all the work that was put into involving, into running that, thank you.
Okay, and thank you for your comments. Councillor Ridley.
I was just gonna second all those comments, because I mean, it's been, it's hard when you've got a long schedule of things and half the year you're cancelling them, the rest of the year you're desperately trying to find things to put on, that must be, it could be quite disheartening, but I've never sort of, never seen that and I've always seen a smile and a joy and a pushing on through and actually making stuff happen, it's, it's a big thanks from me.
Thank you, well, this is gonna sound like a drum roll of thanks, but you know, I just wonder about mine. Angie has worked very hard, I don't, you know, I mean, you are not as close, if you like, on a day-to-day basis as I am. And she's worked very hard, she's been broken-hearted about the, some of the problems we've had and some of the difficulties. She's worked terribly hard at fixing up all the refunds and all that, all the sort of stuff that nobody sees, it goes on behind the scenes. But you know, how worrying, very unpleasant for her, she's done a great job. And I'm glad that Alice mentioned the film weekend. Because I did expect some sort of comment about that and I wasn't sure what sort of comment it is going to be. And I'm glad it was the right comment. And by that, I love what says I'm condescending, but I'm saying it's a supportive comment, which is what Angie deserves. I, you know, I take blame for saying, yes, let's go ahead with it. A couple of times Angie said, are you sure? And I said, well, you know, we gotta have a go, and she said, well, I think you're right. We knocked it out until eventually off she went with it. I couldn't even be there that weekend, I was away, so I felt desperately guilty that I was leaving Angie on her own for the weekend. Not that I could have done much about it anyway, but I felt as though I should have been there. So I'm glad that it went well despite all the problems. And you know, we've never had a failure before, I'm not sure that was a failure this time, listening to what you're saying.
Can I just, can I just say, Mr Chairman, we had 17 marshals, volunteer marshals over that weekend. And it couldn't have happened without each and every one of them. So I think thanks ought to be given to them because we couldn't have run the event without them.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Councillor Morehead, you have your hand up.
Referring to the cinema weekend, Chair. I too went to two events and the church service. And I thought it was just sad that people didn't realise or didn't enter this in the spirit and turn up because it was really great. They were far more at the church service than at anything else. And again, echoing what Angie just said about the marshals, I know they got absolutely soaked at the last minute as well. And I think it would be rather nice, Chair, if we could send a letter to each of them thanking them for their hard work and forbearance.
I'm sure that could be done, thank you very much indeed, yeah. All right, well, thank you ever so much for that and for your uplifting comments, that was, that was good. Item seven.
Can you approve this, can you approve the expenditure please, Chair?
Sorry, I'm definitely trying to keep on your good side. Councillor Ridley.
I'd like to propose we approve the expenditure.
Thank you. I'm saying to my Councillor Morehead, thank you very much, they are approved. Right, item seven then, equipment for events, you start spending money again.
Yes, Chair, just to explain. We used to have nine gazebo's, six small, which are three metre by three metre and three large, which are six metre by three metre. We have no, none of the three large ones are actually usable anymore, over the years, they've basically been cannibalised to make two and then one. So on that basis, I'd like to ask permission to buy three of the large ones. You're probably looking at about a thousand pounds, something like that, maybe less. But it seems at this point in time, given the lack of events, it might be a good time to invest in a little bit of new equipment.
Any comments on that? No, Councillor Ridley.
I think it's a good idea, we should do it.
Yeah, okay, any other offers? Well, I'll take that, I was taking that myself.
If that's a proposal, I'll actually second that.
Thank you, Councillor Dumbarton. Right, that's accepted then, therefore approved.
I was, you know, I was voting on it.
Right, everybody happy? Yes, everybody's happy, thank you very much. Right, at that point, we'll suspend standing orders and open the meeting to our friends who've been good enough to come and see us. Very welcome that they are. We want to now look at events for 2020, what we've, what we've got. So you can comment as Angie goes through them, I mean, we've still got Christmas to come, remember? There's a lot of thinking to be done about that and a couple of other things.
I think that the first one, unless, unless any of the members of the public have got any, I think Vanessa would like to speak, Chair.
Yep, Vanessa.
We've, SAS have got a beach cleaning month, more or less.
SAS?
SAS, Surface Against Sewage.
Good heavens, that's where you got your army in.
So Dawlish Against Plastic and the similar groups in Newt Nabot and Bishopstainton are linking together, we're going to do a beach clean. It'll be on the 17th of October at 1:30. I'm not sure, I haven't heard the final details about the other two groups, but we'll certainly be doing ours then. And before that, we're launching a beach clean club, because obviously when people generally meet up to get the equipment down at the front, we meet up, we have in the past met up as a big group. But now we're, we're launching this beach clean club in the hope that people who are likely to come will join the club, get their equipment in advance, get the risk assessment and the guidelines for the day. And sign to say that they will be in charge of whoever they're with. So that's, that's the plan anyway, so we'll be launching that very soon. All the paperwork is now done, it just needs to, to go out on Facebook, I think Dave Hutton's done a pre-beach clean club. I don't know, I suppose you'd call it a bit of an advert really, but he's just put something out saying it's coming. So, yeah.
Well, normally, of course, being very aware, as I think everybody is now, it's important, so from the, the social aspects of groups, I'd be normally jumping up and down and saying, great, let's all get down there and all that, but of course we can't. At the moment, so how are you going to cope with groups of six and all that sort of thing, how are you looking at that?
As, as people join the beach clean club, they, they will get all the information, which it's included in the risk assessment, that they shouldn't be in groups of any more than six. Along with everything else, Covid advice, the whole caboodle.
And well, that.
You'll get all that information beforehand.
Okay, and will be the information, the fact that they will get information beyond the posters or whatever you do? So people know what to expect?
Yes.
Okay, okay, that's a good idea. Spend it, I mean, that's great.
Yeah, well, hopefully, I mean, and the thing is as well, people will be able to do their beach clean at any time. Once they've got the equipment, they can go out and do it as and when. And be able to avoid groups, large groups.
Thanks Vanessa, very, very helpful, thank you, very positive.
Well, we have to try and do something.
Well, yeah, quite, yes, I agree, I agree, it's lovely to see some activity. Councillor Morehead.
While we're thinking of things like plastic, Chair. I'd like to remind everybody that this is recycle week. And apparently we've done fairly well in Timbridge, but there's plenty of distance to go. I've got stuff stuck all over my windows, if you go on the websites, you can find out, there's all kinds of suggestions as how you can save with reusing and recycling and repairing, whether it's furniture or clothing or food. There's some very, very helpful items. The only annoying thing is that they don't print these sections in a way where you can just print off a page and use it as a poster. It sort of rambles sometimes, but yeah, I think we all could do with a reminder about what we can do. And of course, every little thing we do is our little bit towards slowing down climate change. We don't seem to associate being more careful with things about the planet as a whole. So it is recycle week.
True, thank you very, thank you for the reminder, that's useful. All right, any other thoughts? No, no, yeah, Angela, Angie.
Okay, the first thing we have on the sort of event side is actually remembrance events. And I've been talking at some detail with the British Legion and we've got four options that we'll pursue depending on what the Covid possibilities are at the time. The first is that on, at 11 o'clock on the 11th day, we hope to have a silence and bugler, but low-key event on the lawn at the bandstand. We think we can do this under the current Covid measures, it's slightly complicated because government guidance indicates that remembrance is, can be considered an act of worship and can have multiple groups, however, acts of worship cannot take place on public parks. So it's covered by event guidance and there's nothing in event guidance, as long as we do Covid-secure practices and the normal risk assessments and event management plans we've been doing throughout for all of remembrance, we can do that. I'd say this is if guidance does not change, which obviously is the difficulty, we'd have to ensure social distancing, et cetera. And I understand from the Legion that they're happy with that and they've given me an initial guidance on figures they expect to possibly participate. The second thing would be because we can obviously have no parade or no band, both of those are unrealistic, I think, expectations. And most other councils have actually cancelled and gone completely virtual in lots of cases. The second option is rather than the civic, civic type act of remembrance at, in the church and at the Wall Memorial, on the 8th of November, there would be a private invited services at the Wall Memorial, act of worship and remembrance. It would be strictly limited because of the size of the memorial garden and we would ask organisational representatives to have someone come on their behalf. That, that is the best we can achieve at the moment without any guidance from the DCMS. That has not, it hasn't been published yet, we still await that. We don't even know and the Legion don't, can't confirm whether even wreaths will be available or not at this stage. The third thing that is being planned is a series of virtual, like we have done for VE and VJ Day, virtual messages from, for example, Dallas, Mark Jones, the mayor. And they would go out virtually throughout probably the Sunday, so that people feel involved in what's going on. And the final suggestion that we have, and I've been in discussions with the bowling club and with Teambridge, is that we are looking at the bowling green railings, the green railings that are behind the bandstand. And what we're aiming is to create a poppy wall from the 1st to the 14th of November. People will be encouraged on their exercise walk to work to actually put their knitted poppy or similar on the wall, tie it on, we've got our portable hand sanitiser units. British Legion will put a big poppy in the middle and then people will be encouraged to participate in that as a community act of remembrance. And what is aimed for is that as part of the virtual event, there will be a video, 10-minute video taken of the wall between the 1st and the 14th to demonstrate what Dawlish is doing, even though we can't do the parade and the band as normal.
Councillor Morehead.
I, sorry. I think that's a wonderful idea to have this wall of poppies. Give everybody a chance to take part in, you know, in whatever manner we, we have, can't do all the other things, but that is a really positive thing. Congratulations on thinking of it, whoever did.
It wasn't me, it was Reverend Ailing who put the idea there and we've managed to follow through. It will still need guidance and information, but we think it's a possibility, whatever happens in the coming few days.
Anybody, any other comments about that idea, or any, any other things that Angie said? No, I take it, Angie, that when you said knitted poppies, we're not going to send out the army and rip out any of the, not knitted or, you know, anything with a theme in mind would be well, wouldn't it?
I think ideally we'd like to keep it to poppies.
Ideally, yes, ideally, yeah, but ideally, ideally we'd have a parade.
I don't know whether the WI may well have a view on knitting. Hang on, hang on, I'm trying to, just trying to, I don't know if Jan can unmute, I dropped.
Can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
We've got a save of poppies already. We'll actually get something organised for that, just if it's WI poppies, not.
Great.
They will be knitted.
Good, thank you. Yeah, Vanessa.
Normally, people are in the foyer at Sainsbury's selling things like that, aren't they? Will they be doing that?
I don't know.
I'm just thinking, I can't knit, but I'd like to put one town on there.
Chairman, if I may, my understanding from the Legion is they, at the current time, they were going to have collectors, that was still possible. But we'd also discussed the fact that they had got some other poppies which they, if someone could not knit or did not want to knit, they could buy a type of poppy which could then be affixed to the railings on their behalf, so the Legion could actually raise money at the same time as doing this community activity. We're still dotting the i's and crossing the t's.
Yeah, sounds good, that will do the trick then, Vanessa. Yeah, good, thank you, all right. So that's, that's, remember, still, as you gather, a fair bit to be decided, but you know, if you have any brilliant thoughts, by all means, give them a ring and we'll see if they can include it. Right, your next brainwave, Angie.
Christmas.
Yeah.
I think, Chair, I hope the committee would agree that basically we can't hold the Christmas market or the normal activities we would, there would be no possibility of really making them Covid-secure. And it would encourage people to congregate, which is really what we don't want at this point in time. As an alternative, we have three suggestions which should be grateful for the committee's views on. The first one has come from the churches. And we're looking at having a full-scale sized nativity scene on the bandstand for two weeks. Which would possibly need covering and sorting and security, but they're very keen. And they feel the bandstand would be a good focal point. The second suggestion is that we have a between a 17-foot and 20-foot high Christmas tree on the lawn, either at the piazza end or the bandstand with lights. And we have a costing, depending on the tree and the lights, of about a thousand pounds, that's a very rough estimate. But it would be lit and be a focal point, again, that people could see in the town. And the final suggestion in terms of the town council is to have a virtual Dawlish Father Christmas. The intention here is that, bearing in mind how many children love seeing the Dawlish Father Christmas, and I won't reveal his identity in case any children come across the video. That they could write or email into the manor house and then the Dawlish Father Christmas would be in his grotto in the manor house, able to be in communication with them via video, mentioning their name, et cetera. We've still got the details to work out, but we think it's a possibility. And it means that the Dawlish Father Christmas can still be around for the children. So that's the three suggestions that we have in-house and I'd be grateful if the committee. And I'd be grateful if the committee would say that they're happy for us to pursue one, two or all three.
You've gathered that what we've tried to do is, is serve as many groups as possible in the town. You know, we've got one on the lawn, the ridgely side, and further down the lawn, if you like, the secular side is a Christmas tree. And then the popular thing to please the children. And I hope you approve of that. Councillor Tamlin.
Oh, I'm, I'm okay. I like all three, I think they're wonderful. The Christmas tree, fantastic, people have come from miles to see that Christmas tree, the children around it. Father Christmas, virtual, fantastic. And what was the other one?
Nativity.
Fantastic, brilliant. Can we do all three?
All right, that's probable. And, and the, yes.
Churches have come up with another suggestion when it was being discussed by a group of us. And that is that the shops should be invited to put a crib scene into their windows. I mean, this is done in many, many of the continental countries where every house has a crib scene. And we do all sorts of other things when the shops do decorate their windows. And we thought that either they could decorate the windows specially for Christmas or they could actually, you know, it could focus on a crib scene in the windows.
Yes.
That's another suggestion from the churches.
I think there has been some talk already about decorating windows, isn't there Angie?
I, I think that's with the.
Me.
Councillor Louden.
Oh, sorry, well let me, let me.
No, 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 they, they can hear me.
No, they're passing over there, they're in all their glory.
And this, I'm talking on behalf of Dawlish Celebrates Carnival. And we've got four things that we're hoping to achieve. There's going to be a Christmas and New Year treasure trail around the town. We had a treasure, or treasure trail in the summer and it was really well supported. And we're going to have find a Christmas fairy in the shop windows. Also a virtual fancy dress for children and adults. And a virtual best dressed Christmas pet. So those are the four things that we're hoping to achieve to bring some Christmas spirit, as one would call it, into the town. Thank you.
You'd like the best dressed Christmas pet.
Yes.
Pet. I don't know what you said there.
Your mind, Bodleus, to what will become.
Depends what you call a pet, doesn't it?
Yeah. I hate to think what I could do to my rabbit, but. The Dawlish Carnival and so forth, and the Church are thinking of things. I think putting everything together, it's going to work. But I would just like to make a proposal that the three items that the council would be involved in, I would like to propose that we go ahead and get on with trying to get those places.
Yeah, I, I think councillor Tamlin virtually has already proposed that, have you watched?
No. Yes, I did, yes.
Oh, okay, well I'll second it.
Yes.
Well, I, I think.
I was going to second it, but clearly now I have to third it.
Third and fourth it.
No, I think, I think all those three would be, would be great. Um, I did have one question as to whether we were still going to do, I mean, we're clearly going to negotiate to get the Christmas lights on and the brook lights on. Are we still going to do Christmas lights and have Christmas lights switch on? Because I think we should be looking at doing that, even if we do it as, as virtual and.
Yeah.
Yeah. If I may, Mr Chairman.
Yeah, sure.
The, the aim is to have the lights, the Christmas lights switched on. The only potential problem, as councillor Marwood will know, is our contractor is based in Manchester. So if there is a problem, we may have to go earlier or later. It won't be advertised when we switch them on because it will encourage people to congregate. But yes, the intention is to have the festoon lighting as normal, the cutlery lighting, if the situation with the brook lighting is worked out, and also the Brunswick tree as, as normal, yeah.
Good. I, I can, I can see the, the mayor dressed up in Christmas gear doing an SAS dash to the middle of the lawn to switch the lights on in secret while nobody's knowing it, but all the time being filmed.
Are we voting on the, on the three proposals?
Uh, yes. Yeah. I, I think they've already effectively voted really.
Well, we didn't.
The mayor, yes. Yes, I'm also in favour. And presumably, Angie, you've made of those and the other suggestions, who have you found? Good.
Yes Chair, unless anyone has anything else, yeah.
And they can pursue those. Well, thank you ever so much for your assessment for that. It's the, it's the sort of last thing we can look forward to really for this year, but there you go. Right, so item nine is looking at next year. I know there's not, you can't go into much detail Angie, but can we have a brief outline?
As you appreciate, it's very difficult. We, at the moment, I anticipate booking with Timbridge. The dates, we would hope if everything was normal, if I may, Mr Morehead, to say that. We, we will book the dates for May, for July, for the Go Green Fest on the date that's agreed and the Classic Cars. However, I think the committee will possibly, when it next meets, depending on things, how they are, whether we have to look at more low key sort of social existence events, such as Prom Prom that we had or similar, because they are not amplified, they don't have recorded music, their number's limited and they give some entertainment where we have no other option. In the sense of what we would normally expect for Dawlish Lawn.
I think we've got to wait and see how things develop. I mean, if you listen to the Prime Minister's evening, and I guess a lot of you did, he was already talking about six months before we come to the end of this current period, which would take us to the end of March, God's sake. And anything can happen within that six months, you know, things might improve, they might get worse. I'm lonely though, so we, we don't know what we're doing, so we. Oh, I have a, a hand to my left.
Yes. Angie, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yes.
Angie, I just wondered when you anticipated actually book, doing the bookings, in view of what councillor Louden said.
We normally do the bookings for the lawn in November, that's standard practice. We're looking a year ahead. Every organisation, not only us, will look to book at November, so there is a diary going ahead. However, there is some latitude, for example, when booking as to what we can do. And obviously we, we had like the, we had the August bank holiday weekend because the fun fair wasn't there, so we used an opportunity. And I think maybe we just have to look in, in those sort of terms. But we will make the booking, but it will be what we can achieve.
Thank you.
We have something from my friend on the left.
My friend on the left is I. I'm just going to, you know, confirm that Dawlish Celebrates Carnival will be booking the lawn as well, because we're going to go ahead and get Carnival going. If everything falls apart, well, we'll be ready for the next year. So, you know, there's plenty of enthusiasm amongst the, amongst the group. So let's hope that we can, by August, we can get the town going again.
That's what we hope. Councillor Morehead, yes.
I just wanted to say Chair, that Dawlish wasn't strong without the Carnival. And I know that the committee and all those who help on it have been very downhearted about it. But at least it makes the rest of us appreciate it even more. We will be looking forward to the next Carnival.
Absolutely. Vanessa.
Could I just check with you Angie, what, what date did we fix on for the Go Green Fest?
I'm going to have to look it up off the top of my head. I have got the date.
I, yeah, I, it was earlier on in July than we originally had it, wasn't it?
Yeah, I, I.
So the children are still at school.
I have a feeling I'd need to doubly consult, but I thought we'd gone for maybe the 24th or the 25th of July, because it was pair, it may have been the weekend, because it's pairing with the Classic Car event on the Sunday, isn't it? Because you're going on the Saturday.
I didn't know it was pairing with the Classic Car.
Well, I think that's the day afterwards in terms of the.
Oh, that would be good.
Booking.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
Well, I'll check up on that. I'm sure I've got it written somewhere like you, but I'm not quite sure where it could have been written.
I probably.
It's, it'll be in some minutes somewhere.
Okay, I've got, just to confirm for everybody, 2021 Easter Saturday is Saturday the 3rd of April. And we were looking at an Easter egg hunt. The May half term is the 29th of May to the 4th of June. There's also booking potentially for the 25th to the 27th of June on Forces Weekend. The 9th to the 11th of July being the giant screen event, Wimbledon. And then actually we've gone to the 17th of July for Go Green Fest and the 18th of July for the Classic Cars.
Great, great.
And the 14th to the 20th of August for Carnival.
Yep.
You got that, 14th to 20th?
20th.
Okay, that gives you an outline of next year. And let's, let's, let's all hope that we can do all that. Jan.
No, that's fine, Angie answered my question. I just wanted to know if the, the Classic Cars was a week after the end of winter, so we can. But thank you.
Well, before we go off Angie, is there anything else on the, on next year's programme? No, okay. Right, so item 10, Timbridge District Council Office of Resorts Updates. Anything?
There was nothing to report at the moment Chair.
Okay. And then the town council's joint working group.
There's nothing to report at the moment Chair.
Okay, thank you. Right, well thank you ever so much for your participation this evening. I'm, I'm going out a lot more cheerful than I came in. Well, it's quite uplifting to hear your support and, you know, we didn't really expect anybody to turn up, to be absolutely honest. But you did and you've done a great job for us, thank you ever so much.
Can you just resume standing orders before you close the meeting?
I was just about to resume standing orders. So yes, I'll resume standing orders on the instruction of young Angie. Councillor Morehead.
No, I was just putting my hand up to agree to start reviewing standing orders.
Thank God for that, Dave. You were, you were all right, thank you very much indeed. Thank you for your participation this evening, thank you for coming. I did try to finish before eight o'clock, Martin.
You did very well Chair. And I just wanted to say a personal thank you to you for keeping the, keeping all of the things going and keeping everything running. It'd be easy to throw one's hands up in the air and not do anything, but it takes a lot of people to sort of keep pushing things along. And you are a motoring force in this, in this council, so thank you.
I see, I have to thank Angie for that.
Angie as well, but you as well.
Okay, well thank you and good evening. Go and enjoy one other evening. Enjoy.
Bye, bye bye.
Bye, bye.